Okay, before we begin, I would ask everybody please to turn off their cell phones. We actually have a rule of the council, seven high cell phones and pagers must be turned off or put in silent mode when not, and not be used with city council meeting room during any meeting in session. And so just a reminder, please, if you'd be good enough to do that. How are we doing at 6:30? Okay, Steve, are you ready? Okay. Okay, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Belavista City Council on Monday, March the 23rd. If you'd please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the role of council. Councilmember Wozniak?
Here.
Lloyd?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Burke?
Here.
Welms?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. There's no citizen input, so we'll bypass the council reply as well. The minutes of February 24th require approval. Is there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Wayne?
For the minutes?
Yep.
Yep. Welms?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie?
Thank you. I'd like to read to our citizens an update on our preparations. While we all attempt to navigate our way through this uncertain time, I want to assure you that despite what you see and hear on the news or read online about other organizations and businesses in our area, our city remains at this time financially strong and ready to weather an economic storm with all of our employees. I, like many of you, have lived through many crises in my life, the Great Recession, SARS, swine flu, recessions in the 70s and 80s. In every case, the public expects the government to continue essential operations. This, we will continue to do. We have closed all nonessential city offices, including city hall, with those employees working from home. All city telephone numbers have been transferred to key personnel, who will answer and provide the usual high level of service. Our dispatch, police, fire, streets, code enforcement, and building inspectors remain on the job observing guidelines and regulations issued by the CDC and the governor's office. There have been no discussions about layoffs. We have strong financial reserves and are following our city financial policy adopted by city council in 2018, which includes provisions for economic downturns maintaining minimum fiscal reserves. Our financial reserves are well above the minimum set within the policy, and all nonessential spending is deferred indefinitely. Sales tax, which is 50% of our income, will be negatively impacted by the closure of dine-in restaurant facilities and the downturns in the Airbnb's within the city. On the upside, the grocery stores are still reporting risk business, as is TH Rogers. We are also anticipating an uptick in our internet sales tax as more people resort to online ordering. I expect the virus to appear within our community. The department heads and I have been planning for this event for weeks. We have been meeting with our sister cities in the area to discuss mutual aid in the event that it is required. We have been disinfecting city buildings and have built up supplies, including proper safety equipment for our paramedics. We have introduced new safety and treatment protocols for our community paramedics and patients, including onsite telemedicine capability with physicians at Northwest Health. Fear can be good at times, but too much can be harmful. I ask you to please consider the following suggestions. Exercise an abundance of personal hygiene for you and your families, and take seriously the social distancing guidelines set forth by the CDC for your and everyone else's well-being. Continue to be firm in your resolve to help your neighbors with compassion, kindness, and respect. Thank you. We move on to the monthly financial report. We got Januaries prepared by Carrie. We should be getting in sales tax numbers this week, so then she can finish off the February ones. We continue, as I mentioned in my address, to be very healthy. I would encourage you, if you have any questions, to contact Carrie through email, as she is not in the office. I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Welms?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. We have one piece of old business. It's an ordinance repealing and replacing section 4-27 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Belavista to eliminate the dog licensing requirement and to enact a mandatory microchip requirement for dogs. This is the second reading. Councilmember Fowler, I believe you want to entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table this conversation until our May meeting and give an opportunity to, you know, meet with some individuals in the community, and I didn't think that this week would probably be a good week to, you know, to do that, so I'd like to vote in time.
Okay. Just a week.
Table for second reading at the May regular session.
Yes.
Okay, we have the motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing none? Okay.
Roll call, Lloyd, on that tabling. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Welms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, we have one ordinance amending section 107-162, review and approval of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Belavista to provide additional time for Planning Commission consideration of developments subject to its approval. The Planning Commission currently has 45 days for large-scale developments. That is a very, very tight timeframe. They have agreed that 90 days would be much better for them, and they have submitted this to us for your approval. Is there any discussion at all?
No, I always say that the Planning Commission, you know, they unanimously recommended in favor of this, and they're the experts in this regard, so if they're unanimously in favor for it, then I think that this is something we should, that we should do.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Was he just, yes, on that?
Is this something that we should move to third and final?
Thank you. I was just going to say that. So I'd entertain a motion if there's no other discussion?
So moved.
Second.
To suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
This is on the suspension of the rules.
Yes. Wozniak?
Yes.
Welms?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. Amending section 107-162, review and approval of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Belavista to provide additional time for Planning Commission consideration of developments subject to its approval. That was the third and final reading. Is there any further discussion at all? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Welms?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. The first resolution expressing the support of the City of Belavista for the Arkansas State Highway Commission's designation of State Highway 549, future I-49 Belavista bypass as a state scenic byway. We have received a written request from the State Highway Commission asking that we support their move to prohibit large-scale advertising along the Belavista bypass. They want to keep it pristine, so that as people enter into the community and into the state, they're not immediately bombarded by billboards. So that's what's driving this. Is there any discussion at all?
Yeah, I do have some. I apologize, I had my notes written out here on it. I actually called a gentleman today with the RDOT right-of-way division, and I got to thinking about this, and I'm all for seeing byway. You know, again, we travel across the country extensively, and you know, you love, you know, untouched land and being able to see, you know, beautiful scenery. So I'm not, not really opposed to this at this particular point. I do think, though, it warrants some further discussion. It may have some unintended consequences in Belavista in the future, just because the way gravity limits completely, basically encircles the City of Belavista from the very west side all the way around to Hawassee. If we had any commercial development in the future, people traveling down the highway may have a tendency of really driving right by and not even knowing that Belavista is here or that we have resources for them maybe to stop and stay, enjoy, et cetera. We had conversations about what would be allowed and what would not, what would not be allowed under the scenic byway proposal, and there are smaller signs that can be placed at the exit points as you, when you are on interstate highways that may tell you, you know, you have a mile to this particular restaurant, or half a mile to a hotel, campgrounds, et cetera, and that could be a possibility, and those are part of the interstate highway system if they have room for them. And he said if anybody requests those, they would do everything that they could do to make room for them. There is not any hurry in passing this resolution tonight, because obviously the highway isn't going to be done for a while. And they're actually, what they're doing is they're requesting feedback from cities to see what the support would be, and we don't know what the support of other cities would be at this particular time. But I would be interested in hearing any further discussion, if there is any. And what I would like to do as well is make a motion to table this resolution until the May meeting, just for further discussion, and also maybe some more review from other council members as to what this could mean, because I'm not saying I would not vote for it, but I just want to spend some extra time really fleshing this out.
Any other comments?
I guess, consistent with the interstate system signage they have in Arkansas, as you drive down 549 or east on I-40, by each community exit, they have provision for lodging signs, restaurant or food signs, and then fuel service or automotive service signs in groupings that precede the exit as a warning to the, to the drivers or the vehicles out on the, on the road of what is ahead. And the businesses, as I understand, subscribe or pay for their plaque or symbol or logo to be placed on these signs if they're a hotel or a restaurant or a gas service station. And that would not be prevented or precluded with this passage of this resolution. This is talking about billboard signs, which are along the highways themselves.
That is correct.
And, and I am in support of keeping this corridor from the state line at Missouri along our bypass down to the roundabout area as pristine as we can. I think it behooves us and it sets us apart a little bit. I don't know that it compromises the ability of any business to publicize their availability because of the interstate rules of having auxiliary signage out there. Granted, they pay a subscription to that, but they also pay a subscription to have a billboard, so.
Okay, thank you. Larry, or, I'm sorry, Linda?
Yes, I lived in Vermont, where the entire state prohibits billboards on its main highways, and it's delightful to drive there, so I would wholeheartedly support this resolution.
Anyone else?
No, I would just like to say that, yes, it does, it would prevent billboards, that is true. However, if you build a truck stop or if you have McDonald's out on that interstate highway, right off the exit that, like, directly west on Hyones, Glasgow area, if you will, those businesses will still be allowed, you know, to have their signs on their private property. So, all I'm saying is they're going to get, if you will, first dibs at advertising themselves as people come around that part of the interstate on 549. And again, I'm not saying I'm not supportive of what, what this could potentially mean. I'd just like some more time to think about it. Again, there's no rush to pass this resolution this evening at all.
There is a motion to table, tell me.
I'm not sure.
Is your motion table?
Yeah, I am wanting to make a motion.
Doug said you wanted a motion.
Yeah, yeah. So you're making a formal?
We should have had another debate first.
Okay. So is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
No.
All right, Doug, do you want to make your formal motion, please?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table until the May meeting.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Wayne?
Okay, the motion to table?
I'm sorry, I do, I will just comment quickly. Sorry if you asked for comment. We have had a motion in the second, so now it's time for discussion.
Mayor, why don't you call for the roll? No further debate is in order at that point.
Okay. All right, sorry, Steve?
Hold on, hold on. It seems like a technicality. We're going in order here. We just, we needed a second, we needed a second to pause and see if there were any further commentary. That's all we need.
Now, the call, now, the call for the roll was made, Steve. Okay. Wayne, please proceed.
This is on a motion to table.
Motion to table, tell me. Councilmember Lloyd?
No.
Councilmember Flynn?
No.
Councilmember Wozniak?
No.
Welms?
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Order two, it passes.
No, it failed.
No.
The table order failed.
Yeah, excuse me, that, yeah. The tabling fails.
So we still got the main issue?
Yep. The main issue. Any further discussion? Now, Steve?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
All right. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Welms?
Yes.
Fowler?
No.
Burke?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-1.
Thank you. The next resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with first employment staffing in an amount not to exceed $37,565 to provide personnel for seasonal right-of-way mowing for 2020. This is a resolution that we pass every year, we go to bid, and there is only one bidder, and it has been that way for quite some time. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Welms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. The next resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Stridling Equipment LLC pursuant to a Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative Purchasing Agreement for the purchase of one new excavator with attachments in the amount of $287,818. This is one of three that is going to be combined together, three pieces of equipment, excuse me, combined together for the Streets Department to assist in the grinding down of stumps and the removal of sink. It is being purchased on a cooperative purchase agreement, so we did not have to go to bid, and the money is in the budget. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Welms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. The next resolution is Part II, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Hugg &amp; Hall Equipment pursuant to a Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative Purchase Agreement for the purchase of one new excavator trailer in the amount of $35,480.24. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
All right. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Welms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. The next resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Deco paving in an amount not to exceed $843,000, which translates to $70.64 per ton of asphalt street resurfacing and other street department asphalt paving, and further authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Vance Brothers, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $47,031.70, which translates to $2.05 per square yard for slurry street resurfacing. Again, this is something that we do every year, we go to bid. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Welms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. The next resolution awarding bid and authorizing the purchase of a dump truck from Custom Truck to One Source of Kansas City, Missouri, in the amount of $157,848 for use by the Street Department. This is the third piece of the puzzle, the excavator and the excavator trailer. And again, the money is in the budget. Is there any discussion at all? I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
All right. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Welms?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. The next resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a first agreement, excuse me, first amendment to the limited terminable license agreement, Greenway Extension, with Belavista Village Property Owners Association, Inc., for the purpose of clarifying the permissible use of Class 1 electric bicycles. This is more of a housekeeping item. We, as a council, approve the use of Class 1 electric bicycles on the trails, and the POA has also approved it, so now this document brings the two parties together. Any discussion at all? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Roll, please. Councilmember Flynn?
Excuse me? Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Welms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. The next resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a second amendment to the limited terminable license agreement, Trail System License, with the Belavista Village Property Owners Association, Inc., for the purpose of adding parcels for trailheads. Again, this is paperwork to tie the two groups together for trailheads for the central trails. Any discussions at all? I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Welms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. The next resolution authorizing the sale of two surplus city vehicles currently owned by the city and leased to the recycling center, and five surplus city vehicles used by the Police Department as public action pursuant to the Belavista City Code, Section 2-345. The way it works, folks, at the, at the recycling center, is that the city owns the vehicle, it's leased for a nominal charge to the recycling, and they pay for the insurance and the maintenance on the vehicles. These two are very old, and they have also cut back on their cardboard pickup because of the drop in prices, so they're asking that we would sell these on their behalf, and that will help their cash flow. The five surplus city vehicles used by the Police Department, this is normal turnover that occurs every year. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Welms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrie.
Thank you. The next resolution, awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Benchmark Construction of Northwest Arkansas, Inc., in the amount of $2,478,183.1 for the Blowing Springs to Metfield Park-Greenway connection. This went to bid. We had eight bids come in. The lowest was actually by another company. However, they failed to submit documentation for five portions of the bid, so that automatically disqualified them, and we moved to the next lowest bid, which is Benchmark Construction. Is there any discussion at all?
Awful fancy tagline.
And I might add that this is through the generosity of the Walton Family Foundation. This is not part of city funds or city reserves, but the city will oversee the construction.
Will this be maintained subsequent to completion of construction by the POA or by us?
It'll be maintained by us, similar to the stretch that runs from the tip of Lake Belavista to Blowing Springs. I should, I should tell you that the section that goes through Blowing Springs will be maintained by the POA. There is a warranty on this of one year. The plans are complete, so they're ready to go. Is there any other questions or comments at all? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
All right.
Is there any other questions or comments at all? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
All right. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Holler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, awarding bid and authorizing the purchase of a 2020 Chevrolet Tahoe four-wheel drive from Superior Automotive Group in the amount of $36,771 for the use by the Fire Department. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
All right. Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Holler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Sharon Wynder to the Belavista Arts Council for a three-year term, replacing Terry Wilson. There are three members on the council, and they have three-year terms that are staggered. I'd like to thank Mr. Wilson for his very hard efforts over the last three years, and looking forward to having Sharon as part of the team. Is there any discussion at all? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.